Thank you. I'm a little bit nervous. I want to say that I love this county. I love the people in it. And in spite of our differences, I love some of the folks that came to visit us. And we're going to work through it tonight. Where's Stuart at? Stuart Sevier? Stuart Sevier, thank you. Would anybody like to open a prayer? Let us pray. Oh God, help us to know your presence here in our midst, in the midst of trying times. Help us to find solutions. Grant peace to our community, peace once again. Be with all the speakers this night and help us to think through all the problems together. Help us to be your people in Jesus' name. Amen. It's a trying time for our county. There's a lot going on. And I think it's time that we get together and we work through the issues and we mend some fences. Walk around the room and ask every person in here if everybody's happy with the way the things are going in our country. And I could probably get a thousand different answers on that. I've got my own frustrations. We've got visitors in town that have their frustrations. But there's appropriate ways to work out our differences. This community is one of the most amazing places I've ever been to in my life. I love living here and I love raising my family here. Things that have been going on in our community over the last six, eight weeks, that's not Harney County. That's not who we are. This community is a united family unit. And you don't get to come here from elsewhere and tell us how we're going to live our lives. We're going to work through it. There's a lot of things wrong in our country today that we need to work on. And we need to work on it through the appropriate channels. That means that we write well-written letters void of profanity and sarcasm and death threats to people. And we work on the issues and we talk to our elected officials. We have a congressman that cares about this district. I've been to his office in Washington DC. And when you walk in there, you will see a gigantic picture on the wall of a local ranch on Highway 205. Any congressman, senator, anybody in Washington DC walks in there, they can see who's at the foremost of his mind. And that's us. I appreciate the man. I don't always agree with him. It's a tough job. I have my own concerns about what are going on in Harney County. And I pick up the phone and I call that office and I get a response. And I believe anybody else in this room can too. There's a lot of things I disagree with in this world. But we can work through it like adults peacefully with a united front. And today we're up against something here that's abnormal for our community. And I think it's created a lot of stress in the house sometimes. And I'm here today to ask that this is a Harney County, unite peacefully. And we begin to work through those things. What's going on down at the Wildlife Refuge, it's unfortunate. The events that led up to that, it's unfortunate too. There's some people here in the room from outside of the community that participated and tried to do a peaceful rally. That got hijacked. And people use that for a platform to produce something that wasn't okay. And I'm here today to ask those folks to go home and let us get back to our lives in Harney County. At this point, nobody's been hurt. Some feelings have been hurt. There's been things going on in the community that maybe it was our visitors, maybe it wasn't. Deputies followed home, their families followed around. Somebody flattened my wife's tire recently. She packed up and left town. Sometimes, you know, the stress is a bit much. People from outside this community has come, they followed my parents from outside, that mom and dad. Those are true Americans right there. My dad's 78 years old, my mom's 74 years old. Both of them have heart problems, both have pacemakers. You don't come here and intimidate people. You're not invited to come here and bother with our citizens. It doesn't matter if they're my mom and dad or anybody's mom and dad. It's not okay. That's not how we live our lives in Harney County. Our wives, they have a right to drive home and not be tailing us. Our pastors, they have a right to speak out and not have somebody roll past their house and holler out at them or come park in their driveway and intimidate them. It's not okay. That's not who we are. Anybody that wants to move to this community and be a Harney County citizen, a true Harney County citizen, that's a person who loves their neighbor, goes out and does their chores for them when they're laid up in the hospital or sick, offers to help them out when they're in need, that's what people in this community do. And those are the people I see in front of me today. And God bless every one of you. Now, I'm not here to pick a fight. I'm not here to hurt feelings. I'm here to ask that we find a peaceful resolution to what's going on. I'm here to ask that, I'm asking as a sheriff of Harney County, that the people that are occupying our Wildlife Refuge, go home. Work your differences with whoever else through the appropriate channels. And let us get back to our lives as we live them here.
How do they get to live?
I don't want to see a single person hurt. I don't want to see a single, I don't want to see anything bad happen. In fact, when I wake up tomorrow, I want to have pleasant thoughts about you, that you did the right thing, that you packed your bags and you went home. I too have a lot of concerns about the direction our country's going. But I intend to handle those by working through the elected officials. I intend to handle those by going to the ballot box and casting my vote. I intend to handle those by talking with my friends and neighbors and organizing movements the appropriate way and taking our country back at the ballot box. I don't believe that just a handful of people have the right to come in from outside of our area and tell us that we don't know how to live our lives. Because this county's been living their lives the right way. Now, things aren't normal around the community. And I think that if you drive around and see we've got some streets blocked off, we've got a lot of extra faces in town. And hey, God bless the sheriffs around the state who can. I am amazed at the professionalism and the demeanor of these folks who have come from around the state to help us work through these issues. Now, I'm not concerned about an armed invasion coming in and taking over schools and that. So if there's questions about why the schools are closed. There was a group of people that got together and discussed some stuff Saturday evening. And we wanted to make darn sure that we had a good idea of how to keep our schools safe or that there was not even an issue before people, before we return our kids to schools. I think that, I think that's appropriate. I would rather have people say, "You guys went overboard," than in hindsight, someone saying, "Why didn't you do enough?" We're using the school district office building. The school district was kind enough to offer that up. Anybody that's been into the Harney County Sheriff's Office and walked in there could see that it's about the size of, you know, your average house bathroom, so. Fitting those kinds of resources in is not an easy thing to do. So, yes, there's, it's not four knocks up there. It's just a bunch of people in there trying to figure out how to find some solutions to some problems. Won't go into detail how many, but I'm comfortable that they're there. I'm thankful for them. And they're here because they care about not only the citizens of Harney County, but the citizens of the whole state. So, we've got that block off up there. The folks that loaned their resources and sent their deputies and troopers and not here to assist us through this time. Just want to be able to lay their heads on the pillow at night and know that I've got them in a secure area. And that's what we're doing. I'd like to ask the community to, regardless of what side of the fence we're on, this started over, I don't even know where we're at right now. Because it started over a prison sentence that was coming down for some members of our community. And that was used as a platform to launch into whatever we've got going on here now. I'd like to point out that in their last two months here with their families, this must have added a ton of stress on top of what they already had with what they were facing. And I'd like to add that their families don't deserve that. I've met those folks. And I've got mixed emotions of my own about things. But I don't pick and choose the laws that we're going to uphold. Unfortunately, that was a lawful and binding sentence that came down. And it's not my place to interfere with that. It's our place as citizens, if we disagree with it, to work through the appropriate channel to change the law. It's not through armed rebellion. It's not through rhetoric and slander. It's through productive citizens doing what they know is right and working out their differences through the appropriate channels. And that's what I encourage everybody in this room to do, regardless of what side of the fence you're on. There's been people in the community that have been involved on one side or the other. You know what? This is America. We get to disagree with each other without the threats of violence or retribution. And there's people in the room right now that I wholeheartedly disagree with. And you don't get to threaten me because I disagree with you, because I'm an American. And that's what we do here. Your constitutional rights are the same as everybody else's. So I'm here to ask that regardless of what side of the fence we're on in Harney County, that we mend those fences with our friends and neighbors and put up a united front. And ask these folks out here at the refuge, pick up and go home. Work out your issues from elsewhere and let us get back to our lives. And we're going to work on the solutions to the problems that we face here in Harney County amongst ourselves. I'm just going to go ahead and ask you, how many citizens of Harney County do we have in here? Now, I'm going to ask with the same chiller hands on how many people want to work this out peacefully. Someone like these folks to go home. God bless you, Harney County. Happy to take place. Sir.
Three people, you, Chief Raffey or Steve Rappel, one other citizen of Harney County, governor. These go out in one morning, just tell me exactly what you just said. We're going to work this out, go home.
I watch law and constitution broken. I'll try to do that. I agree. I'm packing up a serving one here right now. I'll do my best.
I'm asking him to go home right now.
Hey, you're welcome to come.
And lay down what constitutional law is being broken? That is the point.
George, how you doing? What do you do?
Been here 20 years. I think you have wonderful ideas. I think you should go out there, be with them. Just a few people. I don't think you have to worry about them as far as having any altercation. I really don't think that they're a threat. I think if you just go out there and talk to them, just say what you're saying tonight. And listen to them, tell them what you want to tell them, what you're telling us right now. I think they'll hear it and I think they will leave. I think that's it. That's all we have to do.
I hope you're right, George.
I hope people wouldn't have to go with them.
Mine's more of a Stephen. My name is Fred Singer and I manage my family in Riverside. Most of my life has been spent in Harney County and I'm a proud graduate of Crane. Our wife teaches at a local school and we have kids in the Crane elementary. Harney County is vast in size and small in community. Most community members know each other at some level. I have personal dealings with the local government and consider many of these employees friends. These personal relationships lead to trust and a certain amount of comfort. But as I write this, I hope that what I say is not taken as a direct attack and used to widen the divide, the unknown is shared. Much of the community's fear of Bundy and the refuge occupation comes from not knowing them. My personal comfort level is a lot higher with the local community, my friends and the people of Southeast and Northern. I'm uneasy about Bundy and it's outside help because I don't know them and how they will act. That being said, I appreciate much of their message and admire their sense of doing the right thing. I went and visited them to get a feel for the situation myself. They were more polite and eager to encourage the local participation in dialogue. I would encourage all people to listen to what they have to say and decide yourself. I don't think it is realistic for the refuge to be beat back to the people or to be on to relinquish federal lands in state organs. I do think that if we stand together as a community, we can get Hammont sentences commuted or for the White East not to be designated as national monuments by the signature of one man. Whether you agree or disagree with Bundy's movement, he has given Harney County our biggest and best platform to get our message out. People are talking about local land use issues. We're working at deep and safe grounds off in nature's eastern cliffs. It would be great to log our forests instead of letting a beetle kill them to rot and burn out. If we've got natural resources that are managed locally, correctly and responsibly, we could all crossbreed the community. I consider myself a lucky man and for the most part do what I love to do every day. I worry my kids may not be as fortunate. And if we don't use this opportunity to get the word out about Harney County and push for government change, that we can all... I worry my kids may not be as fortunate. If we don't use this opportunity to get the word out about Harney County and push for government change, that's something we can all be proud of. Thank you and God bless America.
Yeah, my name is Tim Smith and I'm a member of Committee of Safety for Harney County. Most of you have heard of that. And there is so much rumor and misinformation about it. I'm here to speak for that and also speak for my group. I'm kind of the B-Fall spokesman at this point in time. We have just, Harney County Committee of Safety. I understand some of us and people have none. We'll get to that.
Let him talk.
Let him talk, please, please.
What we have done is we've tried to come together and reach out to the community. What our organization is, the Committee of Safety is basically designed to be all the citizens of a county or city. The organization of the Committee of Safety. We put on, we were appointed basically at the time of the first Bundy meeting here in town. And the people that were there decided that they wanted to change the way the county is controlled in terms of jurisdictions from federal, make it more local control. We were selected, we were nominated and selected to become an executive committee for the Committee of Safety. We didn't volunteer to do that, but we did it because we love this county. And I think we within ourselves are just like you are out there. We don't agree on all the things and all those things that have been done. We don't like the fact that there has been outside influence in our county that has frightened the county and changed its way of life. This is the rest of the group that is on the Committee of Safety. You know, most of us, we're just like you. We live here, we work here. And I think we're going to try to bring the county together if we can. We've met with Sheriff Dave and assured him that we support his efforts. I think he will attest to that. We have never said anything against the county sheriff or the sheriff's deputies. We think that the jurisdiction of the issue here should be through his office and we're happy that it's staying there. We're going to have a meeting and try to reach out to the community. I think you should know that our group has been essentially blackballed for meetings anywhere in the county on any government facility, at least temporarily. We think that's wrong, but we have been attempting to get out to all of you the best way we know how. We have our mission statement here and our founding principles. We'll have copies of that. We're going to meet on Friday evening at the old courthouse building, which is now the National Country Beef offices on 90 West Washington. I guess I would like to finish with that statement that we just came from the refuge headquarters. We met with the people out there, we sat at a table and discussed with them. We had some commonalities, we had some differences. We presented them with a request for them to leave. That was signed by three of our members and three of our members chose not to sign that. And I think that pretty much shows that we are right down the level with the rest of the county. We are not entirely of one mind and one voice on this. But what we are of one mind and one voice is that things have to change because our county is suffering in a long run. We have, one time we were almost 10,000 people, strong, we had a strong economy. We're going downhill in a rapid fashion. We need to use our resources and the federal government is mismanaging our resources as it stands now. All we're asking for is to sit down and try to devise a plan to create a better way of managing our land within Harney County. I'd like to say that our group would also like, after being out at the refuge, we would like the community to come back to normalcy. Our schools should be open, our government office should be open. There is no threat. We do not believe there's any threat from that group to this community here.
Hi, my name is Jolene Harrison and I've lived in the community. My name is Jolene Harrison. I've lived in the community since April. But I've grown up coming here for Christmas break and with my family. My concern is when our children go back to school, how do we reassure them that they're safe? I have a son with high functioning autism and explaining things to him is a little different. And, you know, are we going to have somebody at the school that is going to talk to kids? Are, you know, how are we as parents going to be reassured that our kids are safe?
It's my hope that these folks will go home, leave us in peace and give us the opportunity to get back to normal.
I agree. In my opinion, are we going to need somebody up there to explain to the kids, you know, this, that or the other? That's what you do.
Well, we've brought in a lot of help from around the state to make sure that we can make things safe in our community. And the safety and security of this community and your concerns are our concerns. And we're going to work through this thing. We're going to work through it peacefully and hopefully speedily.
Hi Dave. My name is Ron Goldwin. I've lived in Harney County for over nine years, not quite 10 years yet. I live in Burns. I hail from a city that was very liberal and we were always dealing with protests of some type. All of the protests started off peaceful, but they never ended up peaceful. All of them that I was involved in for over seven or eight years ended up with bloodshed. They didn't have to, but we have groups, we have a couple of different groups here. These groups must understand that there's other folks that come to these large gatherings. They're insiders, they're professionals. They're here to maybe not be a part of this group or that group. I'm not signaling by the law. But they're here to start trouble. We have to be aware of that. And I've had the opportunity, it's lasted three weeks now, and I've had the opportunity to see how Sheriff Ward and the other deputies and law enforcement in Harney County, the law enforcement that's come down here. I've had the opportunity to see how they manage this. And they manage it 10 times, maybe 100 times better than the Seattle First Department does it manage it. And I'd like to thank them for what they're doing. And I'd like to thank them for what they've been able to do. I'd like to thank them for everything they've done. I'd like to thank all the law enforcement that's come from other parts of this county, other states, come down here to back the case up. Particularly like to thank each of you for being here tonight. And I, when we raised our hands about those of us who wanted this group to go home, I don't, I couldn't see anybody that was seated that didn't have their hand up. So I, I think this group is really, really wants this to come to a peaceful end. And I think with Dave and, and the rest of the troops that's been down here, I think they're coming out one another.
Hi, my name is Erin Moplin. I've been here for, I think, 25 years. My husband's been here for three or four generations.
Pick up.
My name's Erin Moplin. The reason I'm here and the reason I've been going to the meetings we've had over the past few weeks is because right now, a friend and neighbor of many of ours is, um, in prison for the second time for burning less than 140 acres. Now, um, I believe that this is wrong. He's not a terrorist. Somebody, somewhere needs to do something to please getting out, um, as a community, as a nation. We've signed petitions. We called our county, um, officers. We called our governor. We called our representatives, and no one has said they can help. We need help. This is now, it, it's not a county issue anymore. This was tried in a federal court, and they were convicted federally. So this now affects everyone within the borders of the United States of America. And we need to get together and stand up. And I'm not talking about a military coup or, I'm not talking about raising arms. I'm talking about raising our voices. Because we as, as, um, uh, excuse me, food producers need to stand together. You, you as food consumers need to stand with us. Because ultimately, when the food producers are affected and affected and affected and affected to the point that we can't feed a hungry world, we're all in trouble. So we need to unite. We need to stand up and say no. Enough is enough. That when they sentenced Dwight and Stephen, nobody said anything, but that wasn't enough. So then they had to go back for the five years as terrorists. When they, uh, created a cow-free wilderness on the Steen's Mountain, it's not enough. Now we're talking about the whitey candy lands, making that into a monument. I just wanna let people know that no use is misuse. We are called to be stewards of this great land that we live in, and until we, um... And until we stand together and we do what's right for this land, because ranchers are the ultimate environmentalists. We're the ones there every day. We're the ones that pick up the tweeting birds in the yard and bring them in, the kids, the kids take their wings together. We are the true environmentalists, and I hope that we can come together and stand and stand for what is right, and God bless America.
My name is Rob Frank. I've lived in Harney County for nine or 10 years, probably. Rob Frank from Harney County for 10 years or so. While I believe the occupation is just in its cause, I think its tactics will fail. The leadership has said to me personally that they wanna empower Harney County and get Harney County to take a stand. And I feel that the most logical way to end this occupation immediately is for Harney County either as a group of citizens or an individual on their behalf, and to go to their leadership and say, "We recognize what you have accomplished. Harney County started this council for safety. Washington DC is talking about the issues that affect us in an unprecedented way, and all of America is evaluating their rights and their property rights." But right now, there is a potential for a national dialogue that has never gone on. But they're not gonna let the hams out of prison overnight because the federal government doesn't have that jurisdiction, the same way the judge didn't have the jurisdiction to miss sentence them. It's gonna take time. They're not gonna hand the deed of mounting refuge over to the occupation group or to Harney County because they don't have, uh, they don't have the power to do that. There would have to be a law passed, which would have to go through legislation that would never happen during an occupation. The federal government doesn't wanna see another Ruby Ridge, who'd be a black eye for them and for Harney County. And I think as Harney, someone from Harney County or a group of us needs to tell them, "We recognize what you've done, but it's time for you to go home to your families." And...
While they're talking, I just wanna take a motion here to kill Facebook. Everybody with me? Mr. Sager, you pretty much said everything. I wish I could have. Rob, Erin, you got the great, um, all the points that I think are gonna come out of here. Man. Forty a hundred percent. I go with it.
Rodney, you know I love your family.
We love you too.
Thank you, brother.
Good night. I've been down there in Cotton, the Bundy group, a few times. Under the impression that if we all go down there, they could...
Alright. They said that at my height.
Alright. Oh, I'm Rodney Johnson. Been here for about 18 years. Um, and I just want, from my exposure down there talking to the Bundy group, I can't say I don't appreciate what they've done, getting this ball rolling. And it's time for us, the people, to take over what they've started and finish it. And they told me that in person...
Hey, man.
They want us, they wanna go home, go home to their families. You guys stand up with me, and I'll be the first one to tell them to go.
I'll stand with you, Rodney.
Okay. I don't think I've seen this before.
George will go too.
What's that?
George will go too.
Okay. Um, from what I don't think I've ever seen this many community, community members in one place other than the county fair. I mean, this is incredible. And so, um, that's pretty much the point I just wanna make. I will go down there with anybody who will stand together, let them know that they've done their job, and they're, we can take it from here.
Let's ask them to go home, get back to normal.
Hey, folks. My name is Steve Atkins. I grew up here. I was born here. I left. The mill went down. I took off. And then I come back, and this is the place that I worked for 35 years, where a company could have come back here. I took all, every firm's time, peril, everything. I truly love this place. I come back, and now we have a situation that I was getting away from, and I'm kinda on both sides of the spectrum here, you know, a little bit on agriculture, but I am not pro-government, totally pro-ranch, but I've seen it before, and I see it now. And we're in trouble if we don't tell these people to pack up their stuff and go home.
Hi, my name is Levi Tyler. Most of you know me. I'm a local here, my family's born, raised here, homesteaded here. Been through this whole thing. Now, I ask you, Sheriff, to please hit the pause button so the community can understand everything that is going on in our community. Not everybody here understands all the laws and legalities up here. So I am just asking for you to please just hit a pause button. They're not threatening us. I personally went down there and talked to them. I have cows right next to them. So I have to address this.
Hey, I appreciate your, your stance on that. I'm not in charge of the investigation down at the refuge. I'm asking that they go home now so that this ends peacefully.
They don't wanna see anybody get hurt either.
I don't wanna see them get hurt. That's why I'm at... There's people down there that I do respect. I agree with a, a good portion of what they have to say. It's about the other 10% that I don't agree with. And that's, that's the way that this broke off. I, I think that our community's in a, in a good spot to, to tackle these issues that, uh, that we all face. I think that, um, in lack of information, people start to seek it out on their own. Where do they go? Social media? Internet? I think that our government could do a little better job communicating with the people and, uh, listening to the people. And I think they're listening right now. They're listening to your hearts right now. And, and they're right. I think, uh, I think these folks probably did spark something that they can't look away from. And so, we've got a good platform to work on, working through our issues in Harney County, our relationships in Harney County, and getting back to normal, or better than normal.
The first comment that we have is that there are a lot of locals out there all the time, like for hours a day. There are local people out there. So if something does happen, I hope as a community we can at least stand to protect them. Second, we can have a... Sorry. My name's Vanessa Leatherstein. I've lived in the county for 21 years, and my family's had branches here for three generations.
My name's Lindsay Tyler, and I was born and raised here, and my husband is Levi. Our first question is, why haven't you guys gone out to talk to them?
I'm not in charge of that investigation out there.
I don't mean to ask for an investigation. I mean, why haven't you, as our county sheriff, talked to them so that you can... No, personally, we're, we're...
Some of these gentlemen I've spoken with for like a week for probably more than eight hours over the last several months. They have a stance that they've taken, and I've taken a stance that I've maintained throughout this, and, um, what happened last Saturday is unfortunate. There's, uh, there's some folks in this room that worked very hard to put together a peaceful rally. I saw a lot of people turn out to support the AMI today. Regardless of which side of the fence you're on, when that many people get together and, uh, work together in a positive way, it made a statement. But that positive statement was undermined by the selfish actions of you. There's gentlemen in this room right, right now that, that I respect, and were on two totally different sides of the line. And, uh, he worked hard to get people to come here and, and do things right. And, uh, unfortunately, his efforts got dashed in the process. But the communities can't come together. The citizens of this country can't come to...